I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, March 12, 2025. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
For those in favor.
Aye.
All right, we will begin with the superintendent's report. Our student members aren't here today. Requirements at school. Mrs. Andrews is recovering from whatever is going around in this county with illness, so Scott has to do his own...
No Jeff.
Oh, you have video technology support?
There he is.
What am I done? It won't go into presentation. It's there, I see it.
I know, I saw you clicking it.
Yeah. I don't know if we've got a mirror different. I think it has something to do with whatever happened behind that closed door back there. That's my story and I'm sticking to it. I've got a really good report this time with a video and everything.
You have to add live.
Mine was up and ready to go, but then I saw Ms. McCourt go over there and touch something.
All this time before the meeting.
Oh, I see. Nope.
The dog ate his homework.
My homework is right there. I swear.
It's coming.
Which file was it that you heard?
The superintendent's report.
There's one.
No, it's from February here. Let me pull it out of here again. And we are March 12 there. Ha ha, fantastic. All right, hey, March 12th. We put out the annual report about a month ago. It is available on our website. If you go to the About Us tab, there's an incredible amount of information, including the most recent data on attendance, discipline, performance, what have you, but the highlight is "We Here" and the way we've kind of organized things this year is for "We Here." Here, engaged, approachable, renewed. We didn't have the state of the schools, but we did prepare a video, and I want to share that video with you today because it also highlights our board members and some fantastic students, so. Nope. In theory, this should play. Let's hope. It might have tried to overcomplicate things.
You're listening to WAMU on the NPR app.
It should be embedded.
Live from NPR News in Washington, I'm Corvah Coleman, President Trump's 25% terrorist.
Everybody wants to talk about what the president is doing evidently, so. Well, if that's, if we can't get the video to play, well, I'll post it later.
It's embedded, but it's not coming up on that. I can open it separately. But then would it, I don't know if it would play.
Yeah, I don't know if it would play, yeah. So, there is a fantastic video.
Where's Jeff Mark?
I don't know, but he would have to, he would have to pull it all. So, we have, we have the video. If we can, if we can find the time, we'll pull it back up again.
We'd want to see it.
The next meeting, yeah. It's a fantastic three-minute video. It has been posted to our YouTube site. We'll share it out across social media. It's just a really great examination of what it means to be here, engaged, approachable, and then renewed by all the interactions that we, that we have with one another.
Hey, is that it?
No, this is, this is, we've gone through the last, last week and then this week, we had the Rising Freshman Orientation Nights at Great Mills and Chopticon, Chopticon and Great Mills, and then this week at Leonardtown High School. And it is wonderful to see everybody coming out. We have full auditoriums. We have all of our students and teachers and coaches all present to talk about the wonderful things that await our children as they rise into their, their, their high school careers. If you weren't able to go, smcps.org, R F O N gets you right to the site, or from the site, you can see it on sliders, or you can go to the schools and it's a link there, or there are QR codes that were available on all of the things that were handed out that evening. They go through all the same information and share in a way that you need to. And really, this is all just to help prepare our eighth graders as they move into the spring and they sit down with their counselors at their school to make sure that they're choosing the courses that best meet their interests and academic goals. Spotlight on Students Read Across America. Last week, everybody has been reading across America. There's been fantastic social posts going on. The Sheriff's Department was there at the same time that we were there on Thursday. Dr. Beavers got to read to the fourth graders first, and then I got to read to the fourth graders. It was really, it was really, it was really a great day. Ms. Horner and Ms. Moore were lovely hosts, and the fourth grade students, Mary Pat Smith, who's a instructional supervisor, she gave me a whole bag of books that were high interest for fourth graders, and many of them, you know, very, you know, novels. And as I pulled each book out of the bag, that gathered group of fourth graders at Town Creek, their hands shot up. They were so excited. They had read all of these books. They are readers. Our elementary school students are readers, and they love to read, not only for information and for academic pursuits, but for pleasure as well. Last week on Friday, we had the AVP, the Academy of Visual and Performing Arts Capstone Event at, at Chopticon High School at the same time. That was also the Rising Freshman Orientation Night, but they, great, great evening, great performances. They continue to really highlight the multiple talents of our students. Spotlight on Wrestling for Athletics as we finish the, the winter, the winter season. Al Koontz at Leonardtown High School is the state champion at 57 pounds.
157.
157. He is really, really small. You roll him off. I mean, that's, that's, that's quite a robust 157 pounds. Devon Barnes at Great Mills High School, he is the state champion, the heavyweight at 285. He's, the class is up to 285 pounds. I think his nickname is Biggie. Unbelievable.
He is, he's a great wrestler.
Yeah.
He really is.
Unbelievable. The wrestling program across St. Mary's County is really, is really awesome. And state champions, keep in mind that there are almost 900,000 children attending public school. So, if you are the state, if you hold the state championship for wrestling and things like that, that is quite the, that's quite the...
Right, and you've got to be the top two coming out of your region to even get to states.
Even to get there.
Yes. And then it's double elimination. It's crazy.
And you know a lot about this because indeed you have a three-season athlete in your home, as you had a three-season athlete before.
Yes.
Spotlight on new staff. We did new teacher seminar. We hold those monthly. It's a great opportunity to talk to our teachers who are new to teaching completely, or new to teaching as a second career, or new to St. Mary's County because they're veteran teachers coming to us from other counties and other states. Great evening, very engaged. We're going to start our second round where I go out and talk to them individually at each one of the schools. We kind of share informally how their year is going, what were some of the surprises, what are some of the insights that they have, what are some of the things that they wish they would have known at the beginning of the year, because we are constantly refining that, that seminar process to actually bring people in and have them really understand what it means to join the incredible family of St. Mary's County Public Schools. And it is theater season time. It's musical time. So, this weekend, clear your schedules, make your way down to Great Mills High School for Harry Potter and the Cursed Child Musical. It's going to be a great time. The kids are super excited about putting it on. I think I'm going to go maybe on Saturday. I usually try to make opening night. I'm not going to be able to make opening night, and then Friday night is very chaotic. It's like, maybe I'll go on Saturday. Great, great, great performances, I'm sure, are in store. And then, right after that, we roll over to Leonardtown High School for High School Musical on Stage, which will not only be that weekend, but the following weekend as well. And then we roll into April and we finish off with Shrek the Musical at Chopticon High School. These are great events. Moreover, because there are so many students involved, not only on what's on stage, but also in the pit performing the music live, as well as all of the backstage crew to make sure that it all goes on, lighting and sound and all of that, full auditoriums, please make sure that you're there. Really celebrate our artists. Then we have middle schools. We have the Addams Family. We have Newsies Junior. We have Beauty and the Beast. We have Mary Poppins. We have Legally Blonde. There are so many opportunities to enjoy the arts in St. Mary's. Please come out and, and see our kids on stage. Here we are in March. We are on the 12th. Budget work sessions are happening every single Tuesday. I wish I had more information on how it's going with the county budget, but no decisions are being made because there is so much unsettled. We don't know what's going to happen with, we don't know what's going to happen. So, eventually, there will come, within the next several weeks, we're going to have to come to some real decisions in some direction. But as of right now, please, everybody, just stay, stay tuned. We look at what's happening at the national, international level, the national level, the state level, and the county level, and at the end of the day, how is it going to impact the children in our classroom and the people who make sure that instruction is happening in the classroom? We're going to be actively involved in all of that. Early dismissal coming up on the 28th, but other than that, we are just in this long slog of five-day weeks, and that will take us all the way up into April into spring break. On March, March 28th, we have the Teacher Pipeline Summit that's going to happen at University System of Southern Maryland. That's where the tri-county all get together to how we're going to grow the next generation of teachers, and it leads into the very next day is the Teacher Job Fair at Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, where we gather representatives from every single one of our schools and offices to interview potential candidates to come to the school system for the following year. Please, if you know anybody who is interested in impacting the lives of children, please come down and, and talk to our, talk to our fantastic staff that day. So, that, the QR codes are there. It's out on all our social media. You have a little bit of time to prepare everything, but on March 29th, that's going to be great. And in fact, if you are in a very high-need area such as special education and you come to us with experience, we may very well be signing contracts that very day. There's a video there as well, but evidently that's, nope, that's not going to play either. We're up at Towson University. Doc the Tiger stopped by to give our SMCPS table a thumbs up. So, we're out recruiting. We're not going to be having a whole host of opportunities, but the ones that we have, we are going to look to fill with the most qualified candidates. So, with that, that's all I have. Videos to follow.
Yes, videos.
Videos to follow. They're great videos, by the way.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have, let's see, Recognitions. She's right here somewhere. I see her back there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are here to celebrate National School Social Worker Week, which was actually last week, but we are here today. I'd like to invite up some of our school social work team. Precious Applewhite, she is a licensed master social worker, and she serves Esperanza Middle School. We have Lori Brennan, who is a licensed certified social worker clinical, and she serves Margaret Brett Middle School. I have Alexis Broom, who as of this morning at 8:34 a.m. is now a licensed certified social worker clinical, and she is serving Piney Point and Greenview Knowles Elementary School. We have Shanice Fedwick, who is a licensed certified social worker clinical at Leonardtown Middle School. We have Tamika Johnson, and she's a licensed master social worker, and she serves Leonardtown Elementary School as well as Chesapeake Charter School. We have Melanie Ladig, who I always butcher her name. She's a licensed certified social worker clinical, and she serves Benjamin Bannaker and Evergreen Elementary School. And last but not least is Lindsay Robison, who is a licensed certified social worker clinical at Chopticon High School. So, this is part of our team. We have 15 total social workers now, and today, we wanted to take a moment to recognize and celebrate the invaluable role of the school social workers in supporting the mental health and well-being of our students. These dedicated professionals are more than just a resource. They are the lifeline for many students facing challenges that impact their ability to learn, grow, and thrive. School social workers are duly licensed through both the Maryland State Department of Education and the Maryland Department of Health, ensuring they meet the highest standards of professional practice. Their work is rooted in clinical, mental, and behavioral health, expertise equivalent to that of community outpatient providers, and they hold deep commitment to the success of every student they support. Through skilled assessment, evidence-based interventions, and support, school social workers address barriers to education by providing critical mental health support and connecting families and staff with the resources they need. They are highly trained professionals who navigate complex situations with compassion and expertise, fostering resilience in students and strengthening school communities. Last year, the full team of social workers saw almost 1,300 students, including 500 in their 12-week ongoing counseling program, and held almost 2,400 crisis walk-in sessions with students. Their full impact is immeasurable, offering hope to students in crisis, empowering families, and working hand-in-hand with educators to create safe, supportive learning environments. Today and every day, we thank you for the unwavering dedication and difference that you make in the lives of so many people. Thank you. Now, Dr. Smith, I'd like to invite you up for the resolution.
Whereas the week of March 3rd through the 7th, and even this week too, 2025, has been designated as National School Social Work Week in school systems across the great nation, and whereas, school social workers possess strong clinical counseling skills, allowing them to support students who face serious challenges or crises, ensuring that they receive the support necessary to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally, and whereas, school social workers being licensed mental health professionals in schools at a time when school mental health programs are critical to the mental wellness and safety of our children, and at a time when access to community-based services are often unavailable, inaccessible, or have significant wait lists, and whereas, school social workers are needed more now than, are needed more now than ever at a time in recent memory, as more students are struggling with mental and behavioral health disorders, and whereas, school mental health programs improve educational outcomes by improving school connectedness, student attendance, dropout rates, and discipline referrals, while improving academic achievement. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes March 3rd through the 7th, and this week as well, 2025, as School Social Work Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and all staff and students are encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance. Signed this day, March 12th, by the Board of Education. If not you, then who? St. Mary's County has a long tradition of rushing in to the greatest area of need and wrapping our arms around a problem and supporting students and each other as we find our way. It is heartening to know that there are 15 people dedicated to this service in St. Mary's County Public Schools, serving our 16,500 students, and you represent them well today. Would any of you like to take the microphone and say something? No, I just, just, just thank you very much. We, we seem to be in this climate where cruelty is becoming more prevalent, and the shining way forward is through your work and our work on behalf of children, and just thank you very much. So, let's get a good picture. Ready? Okay. Who's going officially? Officially, okay. All right, we're going to have to kind of get in. This is really hard on your knees.
I'm going to read this statement, and then you can start, you can come up to the podium in the meantime. Let's see. "We welcome public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. Please keep in mind that we sit as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals, and we cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate." Let's see, obviously, you've signed it at the beginning of the meeting. Your public comment is limited to three minutes, and if you have any written comments, you can give it to Kim after the meeting so we can put it into our minutes. She will time you.
Good morning to the members of the school board. My name is Eve Goldstein, and I'm here today to talk with you about bringing hope to the children of St. Mary's County Schools, the elementary schools. When I was a child, I grew up in a home where there were various types of abuses. I was afraid to tell anyone, and I felt helpless, that there was no one to rescue me. I also thought I was alone in my suffering, not knowing that other children were going through similar things. Tragedy struck again a few years later, and I was not equipped to handle it. This was partly due to my lack of understanding that life can be unexpectedly painful. The probability is high, and it is not a coincidence, I guess, that I'm here today. I honestly didn't know, that there are children walking in the halls of the elementary schools who are troubled due to abuses, losses, bullying, personal sickness, and for other reasons. They too may feel alone and helpless to change their situations or their perspective of their experiences. We need to help them before they lose hope, and I will say it, possibly make the decision that life is not worth living. If they understood they're not alone, that life can get difficult, and we offer them assistance, we could help them in positive ways. And I see you're already doing that with the social workers. Meet Charles the Amazing Acorn. In this book which I wrote, Charles's father teaches him before hard times happen, that, he teaches him some life wisdom that later helps him believe he can get through his challenges. I would like to be part of a starting-up program with the school board that we could simply call "The Acorns' Hope." I would read the book in elementary schools to the students on a volunteer basis. The teachers would conduct a lesson on life skills, including how the children should not be surprised by the difficulties they face or will face, and how they should not feel they have to bear them alone. There would be a safety net with the teachers and the appropriate departments of the student services teams for the children, who would be encouraged to privately ask for help if they needed. At the very least, the children would be bolstered and encouraged, because in essence, the words of Charles's father are for them too. Just like the acorn that has the hope and potential to be an oak tree, we can help the children in this way to prepare them for life as they grow into adults. With your permission, I would leave a copy of Charles the Amazing Acorn book for each of the school board members. My email is stated on this written copy, which I will leave to be posted on your website. Please contact me to discuss a dialogue, or start a dialogue, about bringing hope to the children of St. Mary's County. I thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Any public comment?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sarah Penrod. Good morning. Sarah Penrod, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County. I stand before you today not just as the president of our association, but as a 15-year educator, a defender of public schools, and an advocate for the fundamental right to equality education. Last night, nearly 50% of federal workers at the Department of Education were laid off and the offices temporarily closed. It is with deep concern and unwavering resolve that I announce that on March 19th, we will be encouraging educators, parents, students, and community allies across St. Mary's County to join other districts across the United States to participate in a walk-in to protest the reckless dismantling of the U.S. Department of Education. When the very foundation of public education is under attack, when the safeguards that protect students' rights, special education funding, and resources for the most vulnerable are stripped away, we must take a stand. The elimination of the Department of Education is not about efficiency or reform. It is about abandoning our nation's commitment to equal access to education. It is about silencing the voices of educators and shifting power away from those who dedicate their lives to our children's future. It is about paving the way of privatization for profit schools and a system that prioritizes the privileged while leaving millions of students behind. The Department of Education exists to ensure that every child, regardless of their zip code, income, race, or ability, has access to a high-quality education. It enforces civil rights protections, funds crucial programs, and ensures that students with disabilities are given the support they need to succeed. Without it, we risk undoing decades of progress. So, on March 19th, we walk in together. We will gather outside our schools before the bell rings, wearing Red for Ed, standing side by side with parents, students, and community members to send a clear message. We are here to fight for public education. We are here to demand that lawmakers protect our schools, and we are here to remind every elected official that we will not back down. And then, we will do what we always do. We will go inside and teach and support, because we are not abandoning our students. We are fighting for them. We are making sure that they understand what democracy looks like, that advocacy is not just about protest, but about persistence, that education is not just a system, it is a right. This will not disrupt the duty day. This will not disrupt schools. This will not disrupt the students' education. This will take place before our contractual duty day. Staff will be in buildings, ready to work, and prepared to welcome students when their duty day begins. We understand that not all staff members will be able to participate in the walk-in due to the critical job responsibilities they perform. Our buildings must be open and secured, and breakfast must be ready to be served, so I am asking that you allow those uniformed staff members to join us in solidarity by raring Red for Ed that day if they so choose. Our fight does not end on March 19th. This is just the beginning. We will continue to organize, to advocate, and to hold those in power accountable, because our schools, our students, and our democracy depends on it. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of February 26, 2025, personnel, teachers, personnel administrative and supervisory, ITB, SMCPS, 2025, MAPC, Asphalt Paving Services, A+ Paving and Concrete Incorporated, RFP, SMCPS, 2024, DOM, ELEC, Electrical Preventive Maintenance and Repair Services, and RFP, SMCPS, 2024, Plum, Plumbing Preventive Maintenance and Repair Services. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. All right, we have no action items today. We have two information items. The first one is Ms. Burr with our 2024 graduation rates. I saw SY24 threw me. I'm like, uh, I think you've always seen fiscal year.
So the information I'm presenting is on the SY24 graduation rates. Those rates were embargoed until they presented to the state Board of Ed on February 25th. So when people are wondering what the lag time is, that's the lag time because this data was embargoed. And this information is only on four-year graduation rates and historical trends. So what I'm about to present does not include any of our students who graduate in five years or any of our students who earn a certificate of completion. In St. Mary's County, historically, 5% of less, or 5% or less of our students earn a certificate of completion in lieu of a diploma. And per MSDE suppression guidelines, that data would not be available because they don't report on anything 5% or less or 95% or higher. So the first graph we have here is our historic graduation rates for the state and for the county going back to 2012. Then we'll look at our graduation rates by our each individual high schools. And in '24, the graduation rates did decrease slightly, but it was by less than half of a percentage point from SY23, and they remained higher than they were in SY22. And on this slide and the next slide, it's important to remember that students in the class of SY24 were those students who were freshmen during the pandemic. So these are students who missed a large part of their freshman year. Again, if we look through here, this is the graduation rates for our disaggregated subgroups, or at least a few of our disaggregated subgroups. And I have included in there the five-year graduation rate for students with disabilities because the four-year rate may look a little low, but it's important to note that a lot of these students come in with a plan that they're going to spend five years in high school. So the next slide we have is our trend over the years by subgroups. And while we recognize that the gaps, there are still gaps between subgroups, it is important to acknowledge that the gaps have closed significantly over the past decade. If you look at how much closer those bars are together than they were 10 years ago. Between '23 and '24, the gap between African-American students and white students closed by 1.19%. We're not where we want to be, but we are moving in the right direction. We did have a slight drop in the graduation rate for the special education subgroup. The graduation rate for the subgroup was higher, however, than the state average by 5.8 percentage points. Special education students who finish high school, again, within five years are not included. I had that little box on that, but they're not included in these. So as we move forward, we're looking at continuing to analyze the data to determine the underlying reasons for our gaps between our subgroups. We want to focus on strategies to close these gaps. We're working that direction. We're just not quite there yet. And we will continue to work with schools to provide necessary, the supports necessary to improve the four-year graduation rate for all students. Any questions?
Josh, do you have any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Mary?
I look forward to you continuing to analyze the data to determine the reasons, because most of us know it's plenty reasons why students do not graduate and the strategies that hopefully you will bring forward to show how we can close that gap. I worked in a Department of Defense school in Germany, and there was no achievement gaps. That was in the 70s, like '77 through '81 when I worked there. So it is possible to eliminate the achievement gap. So I look forward to further research on this and analyzing the data and talk about how we can even do better. One of the board's goal is continuous improvement, and that's for our students and staff and everyone. So that will be important to hear. So everybody's working hard. I've been to programs, early access, they had, and they are still having, programs, Ms. Kelly Hall, for students and parents to come out. And I went to one, and it was wonderful. The presentations were excellent. It was hands-on things for the parents to learn how to work with their children at home. So we catch them as early as possible. We have counselors like we had recognized in the day who deal with student issues and making connections with the community and families to get them the supports that they need. And we do a lot of things already. So, you know, it's also up to the student and the families to do their part as well. So the earlier we get them, the better outcome we will have. So I think the school system is working really hard. And I know the superintendent knows about other programs that we have that we're already addressing this, but I don't know if he's going to bring that back at another day and another time because we are doing plenty. And pupil services, social workers, I remember when Kathy and I were on the board, there were no social workers in the school. And at that time, I said, we need a social worker in every school. And some people looked at me like I was crazy. But we have the social workers, psychologists, guidance counselors, safety and security. All hands are on deck in the school system. Everybody. We're making connections with students, everybody. Cafeteria workers, building service workers, safety and security teachers, so that students will have someone that they can connect with to talk about issues or encourage them, inspire them to thrive. So I think we're a great school system, but we can always do better.
We can always do better.
Always do better. And one of our goal is continuous improvement.
It is an ongoing effort, but I think there's really nothing I can add to what Mrs. Washington has shared. So thank you for bringing this forward, and we'll continue plugging away.
Just really, two very quick things. First, as Ms. Burr referenced, this is the 2024 cohort was really the last directly impacted cohort of high school students who were right in the middle of that pandemic, had interrupted instruction, and then were part of that recovery over time. So we expect that as we have returned to what is more traditional across our, across our school system, that number will continue to increase. The, the second is the single greatest determinant of whether your child will graduate on time with their peers is are they attending school regularly? Period. Full stop. That's it. And parents, that is your primary responsibility, is to make sure that your child gets on the big yellow bus every single day. Now, we understand with sickness, and we understand how that, without a doubt, you keep your child home if they're sick. But otherwise, that child needs to go to school. And if they are suffering from, if they tell you that they're anxious or they have unanswered questions, we have people in the building to talk with them, to work with them, to make sure that they are successful. The greatest determinant, as far as whether or not you're going to be successful in life, is if you show up. And so you have to show up every single day. And so I'm heartened by a lot of the data that comes out. Some of it is more distressing, but the root cause of all of this is in, is infrequent attendance. Period. Every single child that drops out of school, we can go back and we pull their record, or if they're struggling in school, or if they're held back, or if they fail a course, we go in and they're not showing up. You give me a kid every single day, 180 days a year, and I guarantee you they'll pass all their courses, they'll move on, and they'll graduate on time with their peers. Because I know that we have the resources in the classroom and surrounding the classroom to help them be successful every single day. So please, put your kids on the bus every single day.
And may I add to that? We do have buses to get our students to school. There are some systems that do not have buses, and the students have to take public transportation. And that is what other people on the bus, other adults going to work or whomever, they have to get on the bus. Sometimes they have to transfer to another bus to get to their school, and they're finding that they have chronic absenteeism and the students, if you're not there, you know, you can't learn. So this is a good school system. We have the buses. We don't allow students to sit on the bus, but so long. You know, they don't have to work, but so far from their house to the bus stop. So we try to make it as pleasant as possible for our students to get to school. All they have to do, get to the bus stop. We even have a program where they know what time the bus will be.
Here comes the bus.
Here comes the bus.
Doesn't exactly when it's showing up.
So all you have to do is get on the bus.
Right, here comes the bus, get on the bus.
And...
Well, everybody going back to work, I imagine, will probably have fewer drop-off lines in the morning and just understand that we stand ready to transport your child to school on a bus.
And get them back home safely.
And get them back home on a bus. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Burr, as always.
All right. Any other small comments? Let's see how much I wrote this.
Uh-oh. Okay. Found a friend. Oh, make it big. Size it up. Oh, fantastic.
Thank you so much.
Old eyes.
So for the month of February, of the $292.5 million budget, we have received revenues of $209.3 million. Outstanding revenues are currently at $83 million. We've received 71% of the revenues. On the expenditure side, we have year-to-date expenses and encumbrances totaling $279.5 million, representing 95.5% of the budget. And there is only one area of concern, and that was mentioned last month as well, and that's for special education. We do have transfers out of county exceeding the budget line by $204 million. However, currently, the category is fine.
And keep in mind, that's the one place that the governor has highlighted to increase local expenses.
That's correct.
To increase the share that we would have to carry as opposed to the state. So of all the things that are going well, that's the one place that they think they're going to give us less money.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay. Let's see. Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, March 26th, executive session at 5:00, and the opening meeting at 6:00. We are adjourned.